Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Call the meeting to order. First couple items on our agenda are invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have with us Juan Humes, Pastor Juan Humes from the Kingdom Living Ministries. Pastor will lead us in the invocation and then please remain standing and Mr. Holson will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everybody.
Good to see you.
I'm just gonna ask everybody if they just close their eyes, bow your heads, and to just open your heart to receive whatever the Lord and the Spirit may give us. Precious Lord, we acknowledge that you are the Creator of all things. You have blessed us and our city with your favor. We come asking you, Lord, for your wisdom, for your understanding. Let it fall fresh upon us and our leaders, Lord, and all of the auxiliaries in our city. Lord, we ask that you bless our police department, our fire department, the hospitals, schools, business leaders, Father, and all the individuals that stand behind them, Father, helping them to do the job for our city. We pray that our city will be a compassionate city, Father, for those whose families have lost someone, who have lost a son, a daughter, a husband, a wife, a grandfather, a grandmother. Lord, help us to have the compassion to reach out and to touch, Father, and help them through this difficult time. We pray for your love and your peace for all of us, Father, who can't help ourselves, Father, who can't seem to make it, Father, those who are old and elderly, Father, who can't do for themselves, for the young folks, Father. Help us bless our generations yet to come, Father. Help us make the right decisions, not for us, but for them, Lord. I pray, Father, that you bless those who don't even have homes or a place to live, Father. Bless us, Father, as you bless them, Father. I pray for our help us to bless them as you bless us, Lord. I ask you, Father, to come and join us together as never before. Father, you have brought us through 2020, Father, and we're seeing the dawn of a new age, Father, a new season, Father, or I should say another season. Lord, help us. Help us. Help our self individuals, our family, and our community to be what you created it to be, Lord. Bless those who can't bless themselves, Father. We ask this in your precious Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Humes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right, let the roll call show that everyone is present tonight.
So noted.
Mayor, regarding our minutes, I would move that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes from April 19th, and except for the record, the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board meeting from December 22nd, and the Fire Personnel Retirement Board minutes from January 7th is presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Next item is claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated April 14th through April 27th as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes from staff?
No changes from the mayor.
Is there any changes or anything that council would like to change? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's outlined.
Mayor McFarland, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented to include the addendum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Caught me by surprise on the addendum because I didn't see the addendum. Oh, sorry. Okay. There it is. Good to know. All right, we have no special presentation tonight, so the next item is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove any consent agenda item? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a roll. Actually-
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, our next item is item I. So I-1, consider ordinance number 1152.08. Larry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to present this item. What you'll find in your council packet in the RCA is a request to essentially extend the option agreement, the land purchase option agreement between the city of Casa Grande and the Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Limited Partnership. I think the council's well aware that the city has been engaged in this agreement with Mr. Chassie and his partners for, well, since 1988, to, in essence, purchase 378 acres plus or minus on Casa Grande Mountain Ranch. As everyone knows, Mr. Chassie has been working diligently over the years to essentially create a vision as an entry point to the city of Casa Grande and ultimately has worked very diligently in bringing the Dreamport Villages project to the community, which the mayor and council approved a couple of years ago. In 2019, the mayor and city council did approve an amendment to the agreement that would extend the option period through June 30th of 2021. In return for that, Mr. Chassie pledged 3.26 acres to the city as collateral for a deferral of his option payment, and ultimately, we find ourselves faced with that date rapidly approaching again. And so, his request and staff's recommendation is to actually approve what would be amendment number four to the agreement, which in essence would give Mr. Chassie and all of the work that they've been doing, there has been a considerable amount of interest in the parcels as of recent, and I do know that the Dreamport Villages project continues to work diligently to try to bring their vision to fruition. But ultimately, the amendment number four would, in essence, extend that option agreement by one year, and in lieu of that, Mr. Chassie has agreed to dedicate 10 acres of land on the mountain to the city that could be incorporated into our trail system, and he also has agreed to essentially pay a monthly fee of approximately $2,500 per month through the time that the land was sold and/or through July 1st, 2022, with a maximum of $30,000 that would be added to the end of the, would actually be added to the purchase price at the time of the closing. There's roughly 304 acres that remain under option. I think the council is aware that approximately six years ago, Mr. Chassie did take down roughly 74 acres of the land that is under option today. And so, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would entertain any, and I should say that what staff is asking for this evening, because we're trying to finalize all the various documents to this amendment, as well as the dedication of the 10-acre parcel, is we're asking mayor and council to approve through the ordinance the authorization of the city manager to finalize those documents and execute those documents with these provisions as outlined. I will certainly make available a copy of the final documents for all the mayor and council, but we're asking for authority this evening, given the fact that we're pushing up on the June 30th date. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Did a good job of explaining, Larry. No questions. All right, consider an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1152.08. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the fourth amendment to the Casa Grande Ranch Agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Limited Partnership, authorizing execution of the agreement by the city manager and authorizing the execution and acceptance by the city manager of any instrument transferring property.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1152.08 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is I-2, consider ordinance number 3264.
Mr. Lewis?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a contract with Border States Electric Supply in an amount not to exceed $295,000, and furnish necessary hardware and software upgrades for the wastewater programmable logic units, or PLCs. The wastewater facility is a highly automated process, and the control of those different processes, or the automation, is done through these programmable logic controllers. And this project is to replace 23 of those controllers and the various associated components that go with those. The existing PLCs are over 10 years old. They were actually put in place during the plant expansion, when we went from 6 to 12 million gallons a day, and have performed very well for us, but we're starting to see some failures, and so it's time to replace 23 of these units. The remainder of the units that are throughout the plant still have a useful life and are performing pretty good, so we don't see any need to replace those. We are moving forward with a sole source because Border States is the only dealer that provides this equipment. So they have this region, and that's who we need to buy that from. Finance did challenge us on that. Why aren't we bidding this out? But if you look at bidding something like this out, we would have to accept anything that's comparable. If we didn't put the same equipment in, then we're having to reprogram things, and a project like that could run anywhere from 2 to 3 million dollars. So this is the most cost-effective way to move forward at this time. So we do have $300,000 in the budget. It did require us to do a fund transfer from our operations budget to cover some of the additional costs associated with it once we did our evaluation and scoped this project out. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Donna?
Just a comment, and I appreciate the fact that finance challenged you on that because then it shows that they're doing their job. But I also looked at the sole source, and I understand why you had to do that. So just a kudos to them.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, I'll entertain a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3264. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the sole source provider offer from Border States Electric Industries, Inc., DBA Border States Electric, PHX, to provide hardware and software upgrades to the city of Casa Grande's wastewater programmable logic controllers, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3264 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item on our agenda is I-3. Kevin, looks like you're back up.
This is resolution number 5295.
Thank you. Staff is requesting council to have two actions tonight on this item. The first is an intergovernmental agreement with Pinal County. Part of this paving project, 3,300, or excuse me, 3,300 feet of this project is actually within Pinal County. So they've agreed to reimburse the city $117,000 for their portion. So that's the intergovernmental agreement. And then the second portion is a contract with Cactus Transport, and they're out of Tolleson, Arizona. They're a contractor that we've used in the past and has performed very well for us, and that's to perform the pavement preservation and intersection improvements for Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway. And that is from Bianca Road to Russell Road. So we bid this project out in two pieces, the base bid and then a bid alternate. The base bid was for all the pavement preservation, which excluded the intersection work, and then we did a bid alternate for that intersection work. So the pavement preservation is actually a cape seal, and council may recall, we did a cape seal preservation of VIP Boulevard several years back, and that's where we actually place a rubberized chip seal down, and then we put a type 2 or a type 3 slurry seal on top of that, and that's the cape seal. So that's what we're planning on performing on the majority of this project. And then the bid alternate was for the safety improvements at CG Maricopa Highway and Val Vista intersection. And we'll be placing a left turn to northbound movement lane in that intersection. We have a lot of near misses and not near misses at that intersection. So we are moving forward with that project, and it'll add the turning lane, which will make that a much safer movement, and then widen the pavement for the additional lane that's needed for that. We did have to do a fund transfer to cover the additional costs because we did come in slightly above our estimates for this project, but we do have the adequate funding in project that we transferred into project 20020 in the CIP projects for this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I should also note, we bid this project out, and there was only one bid, but we did do a detailed evaluation and found that the prices were right in line with what we're seeing on other projects that were bid at the same time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Matt?
Kevin, just a comment. I appreciate you looking into the cost on that, you know, to make sure that we're good with one bid. And, you know, I drove that stretch of road I have for a long time, and it really needs it, and I'm really glad to see the safety measures being taken there at Val Vista because that's a really bad intersection. I think something happened yesterday because Val Vista was just, was packed, you know, with people.
That was a closure on 347 going into Maricopa, so everybody was coming our way.
Yep, and so that's another reason to have it, because whenever it gets rerouted, that's the way it goes right there. So thanks a lot for that, Kevin, and looking forward to it.
Lisa?
And I agree. That's what I was gonna bring up. Of course, just seeing one bid was a little concerning, so I'm glad you did your due diligence and looked into it. But do you know why there was only one bid? I mean, I know you say we do a lot of work with Cactus Asphalt, but why do you think there was only one?
We are starting to see a lot of pressure being put on a lot of these contractors, and some of them are just so busy, they have no time to do additional work. So they're not gonna bid on something they can't do. So we're starting to see that with all the building activity around the state right now and actually around the region. It's crazy. So I think it's something that we're gonna start to see more often, so we'll just have to deal with that as it comes.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Kevin. All right, we'll take this two at a time or one at a time here. Can I consider a resolution first? Gloria?
Resolution number 5295. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with Pinal County detailing the shared cost and responsibilities for the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway pavement preservation project, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5295 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, now, let's consider ordinance number 3265, please.
Ordinance number 3265. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing a construction contract with Cactus Transport, Inc., to provide services for the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway pavement preservation project and the design and construction of the Val Vista Boulevard intersection improvements, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance 3265 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, please, roll call.
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, move to item K. First one is item K-1, which is consider a final
adoption of ordinance number 1178.133.1.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As you recall, this item was in front of you at the April 5th city council meeting, and you had voted 6 to 1. However, there were some concerns that, at council's request, where there was some direction for staff to work with the applicant to address. I need some... All right, there we go. New clicker. So with every new technology-
You need to do some clicker training.
Yes. I was just doing it the opposite. So there were basically three primary concerns that staff wanted to work with the applicant to address. The first concern was regarding traffic, and then there was also some questions about pedestrian access, as well as school bus pickup safety and location. So firstly, I want to talk about the traffic concerns. Now, there was a traffic impact analysis submitted and evaluated by our city traffic engineer. The project is proposed to generate less traffic than what was previously approved as a commercial development on the site, because as you know, the site is currently zoned B2 general business. Residents will have two points of access along Trekkel. There's the primary access point, which will be full turn midway through the site, identified in that circle there. There will be a new right turn lane constructed on northbound Trekkel into the site. And then there's a second point of access. It's an exit-only access point further to the north. Now, residents will also have two points of access potentially in the future, or a two-way access in the future, I should say. The site plan has been modified to create a stub to the property to the east. Now, currently, the property that lies between this site and Pueblo is undeveloped and designated for multifamily, but they have provided a stub for a future vehicular connection as well as pedestrian connection. Now, there would have to be a cross-access easement at that time of development. One of the reasons why there weren't opportunities to provide direct access to Cottonwood Lane is because there's a presence of a large retention channel there, parallel to Cottonwood Lane identified in blue. Another concern was about the need for a right turn lane on westbound Cottonwood to turn onto northbound Trekkel. The TIA did not prompt this to be something that the this project was creating. However, this will be a future CIP project, and through the collection of impact fees on this project, it will help fund the turn lane. And through the collection of impact fees on this project, it will help fund the turn lane. Now, there will potentially be additional right-of-way necessary to accommodate this turn lane. And if the city council feels that this would be necessary, there can certainly be a condition entertained that would basically read as what's on the screen in front of you. And essentially, it would limit the right-of-way dedication to 11 additional feet. And as you see on this exhibit here, it would be primarily to accommodate the relocation of the stoplight pole and utility boxes. Now, the other concern was, was regarding pedestrian access. So, there's one primary pedestrian access in the middle of the development. Should the residents at this community wish to cross the street to go to the retail stores on the west side of Treacle, they have an option to walk 500 feet to the Cottonwood Crosswalk, which does have a walk light condition. Or they can go 675 feet to the north to access the O'Neill Crosswalk, which also has a walk light condition. And as I mentioned on the previous slide, there is the potential for pedestrian access for future connection through the property to the east between this site and Pueblo. The third concern was regarding school bus safety and location. There were a number of meetings held between the applicant and the school district regarding this concern. And what was worked out was that the bus can access the site through its main entry. There's a wide enough drive access and it is free of any sort of obstacles that would encumber the bus traveling through the drive aisle. And it would pick up students near the northwest portion of the site. And the site plan has also been modified to show a gathering location for this school bus stop. And they would have an access to control that gate so that the bus can exit out back onto Treacle. This is just an aerial overview of what I went over. Because I had the site plan oriented in a way where Treacle was, you know, to the west, but it was at the top of the screen. So, this image helps you visualize a little bit more clearly the various improvements that can be implemented. So, a little bit of recap. Planning commission did hear this request in March. And on a vote of five to one, they had forwarded to city council a recommendation to approve this zone change from B2 to PAD. And this concludes this portion of the presentation.
Mr. Powell?
What would be the residence population when that's built out, net 16 acres? How many people would be there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, there's 174 units. So, the applicant can provide probably a more accurate population count for that. But I would imagine it would be probably just shy of 400 residents.
400?
That would be my guess, based on the fact that many of the units are more than single bedroom. You have to account for the fact that even in the single bedroom, you might have two residents within the dwelling.
One of the questions I have is, is... People are going to want to go across in the center. When you have 400 people living there, they don't want to walk 50 or 50, 500 feet one direction or 600 feet the other to cross the road. They just want to walk across it. So, I'm concerned about the pedestrian crossing. And I know we had one, I went out today and looked at it again on, on Florence Boulevard, which is more, more traffic than we have on this one. But that one is not very far apart, as you will know. And it backs up traffic very quickly when people come up to walk across and they go. So, what, what I'm concerned about, as I say, is, is, uh, human nature is, is if you don't want to walk clear down to either end of it, just go to the middle and walk across. And we lost some people's lives doing that on the other end when we put in that cross rock across Florence Boulevard, which has, has been a real safety factor. And I think that's one of the things that you're going to need to consider doing at some point in time. It may start off slow, but I think you're going to have enough people wanting to go across there that it's, it's dangerous. And I think we, as a, as a board, here are responsible for providing adequate safety. And, and I don't think going to either end is going to do that. I think you're going to see a lot of people jaywalking unless we have a pedestrian crossway, crosswalk toward the middle of the, of the, the building pair.
Anyone else have, have any comments? Matt?
I, I agree with what he's saying. I mean, it's, it's going to be an issue. And the, the left turns concern me, which I brought up from left out of Safeway, left out of this development. And then left, you know, left into the development could all happen at the same time. With the pedestrian thing too, I mean, it's, it's illegal to cross right there. So, I mean, that's what we're going to have to go with. And we'll have to see how it's going to go because there is crosswalks provided. I think that it is going to be a bit of an issue. We are considering a zone change here tonight, though. And I think that we've done a lot with that. And the other thing I wanted to really ask was the exit to the north. I think originally that was not going to be a full, full-time exit. Is that correct? Or is it, is it gated and automatically opens when people?
Correct. It's gated. It allows exit only. You can't enter through there.
Because I, I'm hopeful that's going to push a lot of people exiting to that one, to make a right or left there. And we did put it through all of our traffic advisors and traffic. And everyone says that, you know, it meets all the requirements that, by law, that we have. On the human side, I think we're going to have some, some issues there. But, you know, we got to remember it's the law. That's where they're going to go. Also have a, I like to see that access down to the, be the east. At the bottom of the picture, is that going to be gated as well?
Correct.
Okay. So, that way the residents could get out across, but other people could not drive, cut through. Because I don't think that'd be a good situation either to cut through the development. And then the left, I'm glad that you guys, the right turns coming on Treacle, that's going to help. The right turn D cell lane and also them dedicating the, the part for the right turn on Cottonwood, which is sorely needed, but I understand not driven by this particular development. So, I appreciate everyone listening to all the concerns and helping out with that.
Donna?
I just, I just want to, you know, say I appreciate the fact that the developer had met with the school district because I think that that was a concern when we looked at that. And whether, you know, we have 10 families or 50 families and there were children, I think, just to keep them safe. Because it is going to be a congested area. And I think that we're going to have to do some education on our part until we deem that we need to have a crosswalk in there. And I agree with Mr. Powell. It is a concern. But that's not why we're here tonight. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. All right. Seeing none, then. Let me ask for a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.133.1. An ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from general business to planned area development on approximately 16.4 acres of property, generally located at the northeast corner of Cottonwood Lane and Treacle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.133.1 as presented.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, and, and you'll notice that Mr. Gagliardi has, has put the new right-of-way condition on the screen. And so, one of the staff recommendations, as Mr. Gagliardi said, was to work with the developer to get right-of-way for a Cottonwood Lane turn lane. And so, if council wanted to make that a condition of the ordinance, what we would need to do is we would need someone to move that amendment to include the language that is on the screen. We would then vote on the amendment and then after that, vote on the ordinance. If no one wants to amend it, we can simply vote on the ordinance. If we do make that change, we will, under our charter, have essentially a third reading of this because we're making a substantive change during the second meeting. So, it would appear on our May 17th agenda.
Can I add to my motion to include the amendment?
If you want to withdraw and, and start the amendment, and start the motion, you can. Or you can simply, as a friendly amendment, make the motion to amend at this point, which I think would be cleaner to make it, to make it clearer. It's already there. But anyone can make that motion, including you. But I think if someone else wanted to make it, it even looks prettier.
Mayor McFarland, I would move to amend the motion to read as presented on the screen to change code section 17.68.550 as presented in this presentation.
Second.
Is that good enough?
I move to amend.
All right. So, we'll have a motion, actually. I have a motion and a second on the amendment. So, that's what we're voting on. Can I do that by a roll, should I do it by roll call?
You can do a roll call. And, and Mr. Powell, it sounds like you have another amendment you want to make. But what we would do is we would vote on this one. And then you can make your, your motion to further amend.
Thank you.
All right. So, I'll, can I get a roll call vote on the amendment, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. So, we have, the amendment has passed. So, we still have a, I think we have a motion and a second on the actual ordinance.
We have another amendment to approve.
We do. But I do think Mr. Powell wanted to make a.
Did you have another amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
I would like to amend it to read that the, the pedestrian crossing to be monitored and at the point when it appears that it is becoming overly dangerous, that they would, and, and build a crosswalk that center.
Okay. And so, just so I can help you do that, if I understand correctly, what you're looking to do is, is amend the ordinance by adding a condition that would require monitoring and if warranted, a crosswalk placed at the, the center spot. The one piece that I would have to, to speak to, though, is that while we could look at making that certainly a condition for it to monitor it, once, that roadway will actually be under the city's control. And so, once they kind of start developing, I, I think it'd be very difficult from a, from a perspective to, to stop them from doing it. So, while we can certainly put it in there, it'll be under our control at that point to determine whether a, a crosswalk would need to go in. Because it will be outside the developer's control and since it's in our right-of-way. So, it would be to add a third condition to read that the necessity of a crosswalk... Sorry, I'm doing this while I.
You're making your money tonight.
The necessity of a crosswalk at the, I'm assuming, Mr. Powell, you want it directly at the, the entrance and exit point? Or somewhere in that vicinity?
Mid, mid area.
Maybe slightly offset. All right. At or near the development's main entrance shall be monitored. And if warranted, the city should install. And I, I may need Dwayne's help in terms of, of looking at it. It's, I, I can't remember if the correct term is monitored crosswalk or lighted. It's, as opposed to one that simply, that has some means of, of crossing with, with signalization.
Yes.
Correct. But it's, I, just so, just so I can do this, this amendment, instead of just saying a crosswalk, is it, do you have a technical term from your standpoint to be one that has either lighted, like we have in Florence, the one that we have, you know, near downtown? Just the one that we have on Treacle near the school? Like Kevin, do you have any, any technical term for that?
Not a technical term, just a, a little bit of a challenge. Because we would want to look at that intersection in its entirety, not just pedestrians. I don't know that there's going to be any area within that segment of roadway where a pedestrian crossing would be warranted. But there may be an opportunity to look at signaling that intersection going into the, the, into the grocery store. So, that's something that we would take a look at and evaluate and determine what the best step would be to improve safety once something is warranted.
Okay. You're saying signalize so there'd be lights put there, then?
Correct. It, it's a difficult place.
Be just like a regular crosswalk with the lights?
It would be. It would just be a new signalized intersection. Now, we may evaluate it and come up with something totally different.
Sure.
But we'll monitor it. And then if it warrants some type of improvement, we'll, we'll, we'll take that step at that time.
Thank you.
But I hate, I hate writing in something there where we are hemming ourselves into a corner.
I certainly understand that. But Mr. Powell's making a motion, so I'm simply trying to make sure that I can get the correct motion in for him.
Okay.
Should we say, so, signalization or something?
Well, I, I think ultimately, as they said, you know, that we can certainly talk about it. Once we make the motion, we can talk about, you know, the necessity of it, if we could. But, but just say, should install, you know, a crosswalk at or near the entrance? And if that's your, your motion, then that's the motion you would, you would make. If we get a second, then you guys can certainly discuss, you know, the signalization and other things. Is that adequately? Okay. Thank you. So, that's the.
I don't, I don't know that this, I'm not sure I understand where this has anything to do with the zoning.
I think, and certainly, it's, it's up to the council, mayor and council, to determine what conditions you want to place in there. What you're talking about when you deal with zoning is obviously going to be in your legislative discretion. And access, as many of you have pointed out, including the other condition that we did on the right-of-way of Cottonwood, is a traditional zoning consideration.
Right.
But again, I think you have a, you have a motion to amend. If anyone wants to second that, that would be the appropriate time to, to discuss the merits of the motion.
I'll, I'll second. So, now we can have discussion. Would we have to amend the amendment if we went to signalization or some, I mean, Rob's rules technique?
So, you can certainly further amend your amendment. And I, you guys are keeping me on. I just got back from vacation and this is what I get to walk into today.
That's what you get for going on vacation.
Right. But, but, and I'll, I'll try to paraphrase what I, what I heard, you know, both Mr. Raitel and Mr. Lewis say. And that is, they're certainly always going to be monitoring the intersections, right? And they look at warrants and determine what the appropriate signalization and means of getting pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic through. And so, if it meets a warrant for a signal, you know, then they would look at potentially doing that as a full signalized intersection or as a crosswalk intersection. What I was hearing is the potential for maybe even a full signalized cross intersection as traffic goes. But, but those are always going to be things that we look at, you know, as we do traffic, whether it's on Cottonwood or Treacle or anywhere else. Once you reach the traffic warrants for, for certain, to trigger certain things, that's when we look at, at doing this. So, the way that the condition is drafted is to try to make clear that it's a relevant concern. It's essentially pointing staff in a direction to monitor it. But it's, it's going to be up to the city in our right-of-way to determine at what point we're going to actually make those improvements.
So, do we need to identify exactly what is supposed to go there? Or that we just want it monitored?
Monitor. The amendment that Mr. Powell made was that we should monitor, that the necessity of a crosswalk shall be monitored. And if warranted, installed so.
Exactly.
So, I think he's just asking that, you know, trying to make clear as the developer goes, especially if, for example, we always anticipate that development is going to happen today. But let's say the development had to pause and started to look at this, you know, two years from now or three years from now. Or warrants may be different on Cottonwood. So, I'm just hearing that the amendment solely is asking it to be monitored. And if warranted, which means it will meet the warrant, then we would install a crosswalk or other signalization. It won't prevent the developer from doing it now. But it will remind anyone that is purchasing the property or otherwise. purchasing the property or otherwise that it is something that the council wanted you to take a look at.
Just a comment, I don't know any other place where you have that many people right across the street from a, from a market area that, that people walk across to. And I don't know any other place in Casa Grande that has that issue, but I think what we're trying to do is prevent a problem and, and this, this is to monitor. And if it becomes to the point where we have people or too many people walking across or, or not going in a, it would be time, and it's not any big deal to put in a crosswalk. My God, you put up a couple of lights and deal there just like you have on Florence Boulevard. And as they say, when you pull up there and park, you're not there a minute or two before you can proceed again. So I think what we're saying is that we care enough about public safety and the residential safety that we will monitor it in case we need to do something.
Donna?
So, help me on this a little bit. So I'm seeing two different issues here. So I'm seeing what's before us and I agree with Mr. Powell that I think we do need to monitor, but that's, we're not talking to the developer, we're talking about our responsibility as a city. So if we bring that back up to do a study on that, it doesn't have to be included in this. Am I right? No, I'm not right or yes?
No, yes, you're right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Lisa?
Well, and I don't see a problem putting that in. I mean, just, you know, councils change, you know, management changes, I don't have a problem with that, but of course, this area concerns me putting a crosswalk because I get the Florence Boulevard one and obviously we needed it for, for safety reasons, having the apartment complex or hotel across the street. But the only thing that worries me here, putting a crosswalk, is having this major intersection. You know, on Florence, we don't have both, you know, the, the intersection where these are two major arterials in the, in the city. So, but of course, if we study it and see if we need it and if it, if this is a good location, you know, I don't have any problems putting it in and looking at it later if we needed to.
And that was the objective, is to have it in place. And if we need to do it, proceed with it. If we don't need to do it, then we won't worry about it.
And if, if it, if it's just not logistically, you know, the right place to do it too.
Well, I think they can place it because you can go back and forth a little bit from the big entrance there to get people across it. But as they say, right now, I'm, I'm just trying to, to get a method in there to address that later on if we have those issues. And God helps us, we have to kill people like they did at the other one there, seriously, that go across the street and don't make it. We certainly don't want to have that happen again in our town.
I had a quick question on, on this and maybe Kevin can answer, but you know, I know it's a gated community, but is, can they put, you know, gates on, on both the north and south sides for people to come in and out of, you know, so they're not walking through the middle of the, of the development and, you know, trying to jaywalk across the street? Can, can you put more gates or anything on the ends of that or no? Is that something they just don't do?
I don't think the gates are, they're inside. If you look at that, the gates are on the inside, though, so the roadway has sidewalks on the sides of it, so there's no gates, there's no.
Well, that's what I'm asking, can you though, on those corners, you know, but I, I guess not. Because there are homes there, right?
A pedestrian gate.
Yeah, pedestrian gate is what I was just curious about.
I could probably address that question if it's proper for me, too. So, so that was actually something that had been discussed with the applicant, that they could provide a pedestrian gate. We were recommending, we being staffed somewhere near the southwest corner of the site, just so that someone can access the intersection closer without having to, you know, be tempted to just dart across. And the, in our discussions, the applicant is, is willing to do that. They have to find the right place that would work, but, but to your point, there can be, you know, a pedestrian gate added.
So then they don't have to walk to the center of it and go.
That's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a, a, not a motion, but it's a.
A motion.
A motion. A motion for the amendment. Do I have a second?
I think you did second it.
Okay. All right. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote then on the amendment, the second amendment?
Councilmember Lavender.
No.
Councilmember McBride.
No.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Definitely yes, and all we're doing is saying to try to provide some safety for our future development and we got people voting against it. Your vote, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, so the amendment passed. Well, then can we now do the roll call vote on the ordinance, please?
No, but, but just to be clear for anybody, that doesn't include both.
Of the amendments which have passed. So you're now voting on the ordinance, including both of the two amendments that have passed.
Bob?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Mayor McFarland.
There's already a motion on.
You already have the motion before the ordinance.
Do I need, do I need to add?
No, it's presented plus the two amendments?
No.
Okay.
I was just trying to make clear. Laurie was, was, we wanted to make clear for anybody watching that the two amendments have passed. This is a little unique for the way that we do things. The two amendments have passed, so you're now voting on the ordinance, including both amendments.
All right, so I need a roll call vote.
Yes. Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
And I apologize to the developer because you're going to have to come back again, but yes. But it did pass. Okay. Next item on the agenda is K2, Consider Resolution Number 5296.
Staff recommends that the mayor and council approve an agreement with the Federal Transit Administration to allow the city to receive federal transportation funding authorized by the United States Code Title 49 Transportation, Chapter 53 Public Transportation, Section 5307 Urbanized Area Formula Grants and/or other federal statutes administered by the FTA. Having exceeded a population of 50,000 during the 2010 census process, we became eligible for these federal transit funding through the Urbanized Area Formula Grants. There's a detailed application process to get us to that eligibility so that we can take advantage of those grants and make our grant requests if we move forward with a transit program. So what I want to make clear tonight is this agreement is just starting the application process to make us eligible for future grants. It is not obligating us on a transit program. That's not part of this. What it does is it sets us up to help us fund one if we so choose in the future. So the agreement that you're approving tonight, the resolution, will allow the city manager to execute and file an application to the, for federal assistance, execute and file with the FTA various documents, including the required annual certification and assurances, execution of grant and other agreements with the FTA, and draw payments against available grant funding using FTA automated programs. So there's no fiscal impact at this time for this, it just starts this application process. And Dwayne did provide the slide that everybody can see up there. I can't because I'm blind, but that's okay. But it does outline where in a process for moving forward with a transit program, this step is, and it's number two. So it's the authorizing resolution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or more importantly, Dwayne's behind me to answer any questions.
Kevin, and can I, I add a little bit to that? In other words, if we, for example, as, as a community of over 50,000 people, there's different buckets of money that you pull from, from the feds. And so in order for us to get our delegation of authority, basically, we need to apply and go through this process. It allows us then the ability to apply directly to the federal government to receive direct federal funding for a transit program versus going through the state or going through ADOT, which is what we've had to do in the past because we don't have a deleg, a, or delegation of authority. Is that correct? Did I, am I interpreting that correctly? Dwayne?
I referred to Dwayne.
You can just say yes.
Yes, I mean, the money comes directly to us.
Right.
Versus Coolidge money, they have to go to ADOT to get their.
And there's times, too, when, when ADOT then will take some money, take a share of it, right?
Right.
Yeah, so this way we get 100% of the funding. That's another benefit.
Yes. We don't have to compete with other cities or anything. We have a certain amount of money.
And we've kind of left that on the table for the last few years, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dwayne. Bob?
This is a general question. Does this, does the potential projects just include anything transportation related or is it?
No, this is transportation. It's a transit, sorry.
Transit. So like, like bus service or something that, that fits it? Okay.
Yeah, we, we continue to study the options to bring forward in the future as far as transit alternatives.
Okay.
For you guys to consider. This just allows us to be in that position where if we want to take advantage of those grant funds, when we so choose, we have that ability.
Okay, thank you.
It does not obligate us in any other way.
Vans in the future, could be, you know, anything transit related.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, seeing no more questions, then I'll entertain a resolution, please. Gloria?
Resolution Number 5296, a resolution of the mayor and city council, the city of Casa Grande, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the filing of applications with the federal, federal transit administration for federal transportation assistance, authorizing the city manager to file and execute all annual certifications as necessary, authorizing the city manager to execute grant agreements as necessary, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds as necessary, and authorizing the city finance director to disperse funds and transfer budget authority as necessary.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution Number 5296 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay. So item K3 has been moved, so move to the next item, which is in our public meetings and hearings, L1, which is a public hearing and considering ordinance number 1178.121.1. Did you gag there, already?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request on behalf of Lennar for an amendment to a portion of the McCartney Ranch planned area development zone. This is a little bit of background and why this item is in front of you this evening. Lennar Homes owns 115 lots within Parcels 3 and 4 of McCartney Ranch. Planning Commission approved the housing product, that's basically design review, for six single-story home plans in February. One of those six home plans was intended to provide a multi-generational suite within it. Now, the name that Lennar calls it is a next-gen suite, and I'll talk to you about that a little bit more on the next slide. However, the planned area development zone district permits specifically for single-family homes. And though this next-gen suite home is meant to be for individual families, this multi-generals, multi-generational suite doesn't meet the PAD's definition for single family, so an amendment is necessary. Now, what I mean by a next-gen suite or a multi-generational suite is within this specific home plan, it's a 751 square foot separate living area within the home, and it's designed either for parents of adult children or adult children moving into the home owned by parents. And it's designed to provide a separate enclave within the house. There's one large bedroom within that suite with a walk-in closet with a living area and kitchen. This next-gen suite does have adequate access throughout the rest of the home as well as the garage, as well as an exterior access point. The red circle on the left provides direct access into the house proper, and then the green circle provides direct access into the garage that's shared by the whole household. And then the black circle on the right is an exterior door. Now, when we look at the zoning for McCartney Ranch, it's allowed use for this particular area is just simply single-family residential, and there's no clear definition within that PAD guide as to what that means. So we have to default to the city code, and the city code section 1712520 defines single-family dwelling as a building used for residential occupancy by one family. So if we looked at that code section alone, there really isn't a problem because Lennar is telling us this is designed for residential occupancy by one family. However, when we look at the definition of family as 1712560, it says any number of individuals customarily living together as a single housekeeping unit and using common kitchen facilities. And it really comes down to the fact that this isn't technically a single housekeeping unit because having that multi-generational suite within the home presents two separate kitchens. And so the PAD amendment would allow this home plan to go forward with a next-gen suite, but the PAD amendment includes basically four provisos. The first one is that the next-gen suite can't be separately rented. The living space for the suite will have to maintain unrestricted interconnectivity inside of the home. It applies, this amendment would only apply to the lots owned by Lennar, so it doesn't enable every single lot within McCartney Ranch to have this ability. And also, any additional home plan proposed for a next-gen suite, there's only been one plan, which could in theory be constructed on, on any one of the 115 lots owned by Lennar. But should there be an additional home plan or a second, or any additional plan with a second kitchen beyond this specific plan, there would be the requirement for a new housing product approval by Planning Commission. And that's standard operating procedure whenever a builder introduces any additional home plans. They would have to go through Planning Commission for new housing product approval. Now, when looking at amendments to PADs, it's subject to meeting certain criteria, and the staff report included in your packets goes into this in a lot more detail, but I want to take time to just talk about the two highlighted items. The first one is regarding conformance with the city's general plan. McCartney Ranch sits within the neighborhood's general plan land use category. The neighborhood's land use category allows a density of up to four dwelling units per acre. And the density of McCartney Ranch is not changing because they're not adding more dwelling units, it's just simply a home plan that allows this additional suite. But I bring that up because if you look at the density of McCartney Ranch, it's at 2.92, so it's considered a low-density development. And so having a home with this multi-generational suite should not be seen as an impact. There's also a goal with. There's also a goal within the general plan that states that, it, it should be a goal that we provide a variety of housing choices for all income levels, generations, and household demographics. So the inclusion of this next-gen suite will provide dynamic options for young families or retirees alike. And additionally, this could be seen as helping address the affordable housing issue. The other criteria I want to talk about is the adequacy of the plan with respect to land use. So as required with the housing product that Planning Commission considered, each floor plan has to provide three elevations. So this plan number with the intergenerational or next-generational suite has a Spanish elevation, a ranch hacienda elevation, and a craftsman elevation, and it looks like any other single-family dwelling in the neighborhood. If you look at examples provided by the applicant of a Lennar community in Chandler, both from the aerial view, three one seven one South Wachuka Way, that's a home with an inter, a next-generational suite, and then you see the street view on the right, it appears like every single-family residential dwelling in that community. So as far as the public notification process is concerned, we did notify owners of property within three hundred feet of the lots subject to the PAD amendment, leading up to the Planning Commission meeting, and it also had notified for this council meeting. We had received one comment leading up to the Planning Commission meeting, but no one from the public was in attendance at the Planning Commission hearing, and there's been no additional comments received since Planning Commission. The comment that staff did receive, leading up to the Planning Commission, was from someone who owned property within McCartney Ranch, and they actually weren't against this. He indicated that he owned property elsewhere in town as well as within the valley, and he's very familiar with this product. He just posed the question as, you know, how do we ensure that the suite is not ever to be rented separately? And that's a very good question that we don't have a solid answer for, other than the fact that the CCNRs in place for McCartney Ranch do not allow this. Lennar is not proposing to change the CCNRs. And the PAD amendment proposes the same. One of the criteria within the proposed PAD is that this would not be separately rented, and it's to maintain unrestricted interconnectivity within the home. And as I indicated, Planning Commission did consider this at its April first hearing, with a unanimous vote recommending to forward to city council a recommendation to approve this PAD amendment, which would thereby approve plan number forty eighty-three that had that next-generational suite, subject to these conditions that have been embedded into the proposed PAD narrative. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Powell?
Looking at some of the models, there's a lot of them that are garage dominant, and for a while, we weren't doing that. Are we doing that again now, or are we opening that up for, to be all right to build garage dominant?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, that's a great observation. We do still apply criteria that helps minimize the garage dominance. This particular neighborhood was approved at a time that predates those more restrictive requirements for, for garage dominance, and so they did not provide the array of homes with like side-loaded garages, et cetera, that would be in place in newer communities.
Are they in seven thousand square-foot lots?
Yes.
They are. Good.
Matt?
I think it's a great idea, and it's a new housing product, it's what people want, and it meets, the neat thing about our one condition is that generational housing, affordable housing. My concern comes with the enforcement of the, I mean, that's my biggest concern. I know you addressed it, I know it's everyone's concern. Would that enforcement fall upon code enforcement, the police department? I mean, that's the tricky part here, and, and I get it, I mean, I'm asking kind of rhetorical, but I mean, how do we enforce that? And I mean, to be up to the neighborhoods to self-police, I think pretty much, you kind of got to figure that out. We're not going to go knocking on doors, but how would we enforce that, and what would the penalty, penalty be?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, it's a, it's a great question. I think as you ask the question, a number, any number of those possibilities would exist. It would start with code enforcement. It really wouldn't be a function of police action. It would be our city.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement officers. And then also, there's the potential for their own property management association to intervene, because it, it would be a violation of their covenants. So it could be self-regulating in that regard as well.
And the other, because the other important point, there's a hundred and fifteen lots left, right? And I mean, they're not all going to have this plan on them, so I mean, probably talking maybe ten, twenty, you know, so.
Correct. A lot of it is largely based on the success of that plan. Some plans sell better than others. But another thing that would help regulate that is there's particular design standards that state that no two homes with the exact elevation and color can be next to each other, and there's certain, there's a certain matrix that just would organically keep every single lot having this.
Right.
In theory, but.
And, yeah, and I mean, financially probably wouldn't work, but, but I appreciate, I think it's a great product, but I just don't want us to get caught figuring out what's going to happen, so, anyway, but yeah, I like it.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say, I'm, I'm so supportive of this, I appreciate us having this ability to approve this product. We, we have talked to clients that specifically were looking for next-gen floor plans, and I know there are some challenges to it, which I'll ask in just a moment, but I was going to say, there, there are so many family dynamics that people need this type of, of floor plan, specifically the one that I'm thinking of, they had a special needs adult child that they wanted to provide some independence to, but yet they wanted to be able to be there to, to provide support. The, the question that I have, I understand we're looking at this as, as a PAD issue, is, is there fire code that, that would prohibit this? I, I have a friend that lives in the county that made an addition to their home, and, and the, the county prohibited the addition of another kitchen, but I thought it was a fire code, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, my understanding is it has the same building occupancy as a single-family home, so it doesn't trigger a different fire code under our rules.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Donna?
Just to follow up on that, on the kitchen, it is a full kitchen, both, both of them are full kitchens.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McBride, correct. They are, they would both have accommodations for full kitchens.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Comments? All right, this is a public hearing, so, want to throw open the floor to the public if there's anyone here who would like to make a comment. Please state your name and give us your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, the name is Rod Jarvis, thirty-one oh one North Central Avenue, here on behalf of Lennar Homes. I don't, I, I have a PowerPoint here with you all, but I don't think we need to go there. Very much appreciate staff's presentation, and I just want to dovetail on it slightly, if I may. Going along the lines of some of the comments from council, this is a product that's very much needed in today's society. Interesting statistic that adds to that, two thousand and ten, the number of, the percentage of folks sixty-five years and older in the population was thirteen percent in the United States. By two thousand and thirty, it's estimated that percentage will be nineteen percent. I resemble that remark. I, I fall right into this baby boomer generation that we're talking about here, as well as the, the adult special needs child situation. Those are probably the two most needful segments of the population that fall into needing this particular kind of product. What I want to dovetail with staff about is the point they made about the kitchens. Except for the stove and oven, you could have two kitchens in the house under your code. It's the stove oven that has been interpreted to be the trigger. That's what has raised the question. Everything else, if you don't have the stove oven, you're okay. But the irony is that there's all kinds of other cooking implements that can be used. Hot plates, microwave ovens. Goodnight, they make toaster ovens that effectively act like ovens. My wife bought one of those. Don't use it. But it's there. So there's all kinds of ability. You could have the sink, you could have the dishwasher, you could have the refrigerator, you could have the cabinets, all in that other suite. It's just a question of the stove oven. So I really do think that when we drill down on this, the question is, do we want this segment of the population needs this to be able to have that level of independence or not? Do we want the generations to be able to help one another and still have that, that nice grease on the wheels that allows those two generations to coexist with just that level of independence that it, that it adds to have that stove and oven in there? And also think of those holidays when it's really nice to have that other stove and oven. So I, I really think that's what we need to focus on here. This societal benefit weighed against the, the second stove and oven. We think it's, it's an excellent product, it's done very, very well in, in other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions have embraced it. We think this will do well here, and be happy to answer any questions you may have. Wow, I did that exactly right.
Mr. Powell?
I, I'm just curious, I have no problem at all with the kitchens, but do you have extra bedrooms if you have extra people in there, or how do you, how does the rest of the house address the needs?
That floor plan that you'll, you'll see there in your packet, has actually the master and a couple of other bedrooms, and then it has this suite. That's how it, how it works. And it, it uses a great room for the, for the main part of the house, and it has a kind of a nice living room, sitting room area for the, for the other part. Remember, there is easy access in between them. I, you know, the enforcement question was raised, and all, the answer to that is all enforcement goes by the same process. It's on a complaint basis. There is no jurisdiction, the state of Arizona has enough enforcement personnel to go around and inspect, but when somebody complains, then enforcement works. I, I used to be an enforcement hearing officer from Maricopa County, and case gets brought before you, you look at the photos, you ask the questions, and you enforce the zoning code. Similarly, of course, the homeowners association has all kinds of enforcement, and their ability to enforce is even quicker, you know? They have an automatic fine, you know, they send out a notice, thirty days later, that fine hits, and if it's not resolved, then thirty days later, that fine gets increased. So I think there's all kinds of infrastructure out there to handle people not, not abusing this for some other purpose.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else from the audience? All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll consider an ordinance number, please.
It's number one one seven eight point one two one point one. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to a portion of McCartney Ranch Planned Area Development adopted for property generally located north of Rodeo Road and west of Brown Avenue, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number one one seven eight point one two one point one as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next public hearing is.
At the conclusion of that, I would just address, with two kitchens, I would probably get very heavy before.
Mayor? Did we skip K three?
Yes, it got moved to L four.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That was the.
The amendment?
The amendment.
Gotcha.
That you so aptly reminded me of.
It came back to me.
All right, move to item L two, public hearing and consider ordinance number one one seven eight point four oh eight. Mr. Horn?
I've got a new fancy clicker that I need to learn how to do, huh? All right, let's see if I can figure this out.
The training, right.
You click and you qualify.
OJT.
Nope, now I got a laser.
It's the left side, I think. It's opposite. Oh, there's volume.
All right, there we go. All right, I think I got it figured out now. So, Mike Keck is requesting a zone change from single-family residential, R one, to multifamily residential, R three, for approximately two point four nine acres of land, generally located east of Schultz Street and north of McMurray. You can see the site highlighted in yellow there. And just a little quick blow up, you can see it's R one right now, requests to R three, multifamily residential. Site is requested to be rezoned to create a multifamily apartment complex. The project aims to address the growing and unmet need for multifamily residences within the city. From the city planning's perspective, this provides a good opportunity to provide workforce housing in an infill site with proximity to the downtown and to the industrial area of the city. When looking at the zone change criteria, we looked at the proposed use shall be in conformance with the general plan. The first one is that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and applicable elements. The site lies within the Phase One primary growth area of the general plan, R three, and is appro, is an appropriate zoning in the community center land use category. Policy C four point seven point one states to encourage a variety in neighborhood design and development patterns. This isn't an area that has manufactured home park as well as single-family residents in the area, so this just adds another product to that. And then policy C four point one point four states to support infill development in areas where infrastructure capacity and services are already in place, which is the case for this particular site. The second one is a rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities, densities or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. The request, again, for a zone change to R three is an allowable and appropriate land use within the general plan, and then the community center category allows for a density between four and twenty units per acre. At four, at two point four nine acres, the site could accommodate somewhere around ten to fifty dwelling units. If the zone change is denied, development of the site would be very limited due to the ADWR requirements, it would limit it to a maximum of five single-family homes. The following, the next item that we look at is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. The zone change will allow the current owner to develop and utilize the property for a new multifamily apartment complex, a product type that the city has determined to need additional inventory to meet the demand. In regards to public here, uh, public notice, we met or exceeded all standards by the city, we did not receive any comments on this particular request. The Planning Commission on a six-oh vote recommend the mayor and the city council approve the zone change request from single-family residential to multifamily residential, R three, with the following condition as stated in the ordinance, and that's our new standard right-of-way dedication, uh, condition. That concludes it. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Does this property have a cause?
It does not.
Okay, so, so that's even a bigger problem.
Right, so they would be limited to the, to five.
Because they couldn't subdivide more than five times.
Yeah, and, and that's if the other portions of that neighborhood, they're actually in a subdivision for Houck Sunset subdivision from nineteen twenty or.
Okay.
And so there has been some other splits, so it would be.
Oh.
It would be a challenge maybe even to. split it into five.
Okay. And then I know this is probably not something that you're prepared to answer, Mike, but have you guys thought about how many units and what you might rent them for? This is for my own personal information. I'm trying to gather affordability and what the rental price might be.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for having our opportunity here. We have just now engaged with the site planner to come up with an appropriate site plan. But we are working closely with the planning department and Paul Tice's staff to determine what would be best fit for the community there. We're looking for guidance from them. I do want to take a moment and thank them for their time. This is my first time through this process, as you're all aware, and they've made themselves very available to help me get through it. But we're just looking at options right now, but there wasn't any sense in committing to the expense of conceptual plans and such until we knew that we could get the zoning.
Okay. I think it's a great infill project. I think it's a good use of that land, so... Does anybody else have any questions on the council? Bob?
Just a statement. As you said, Mayor, it's a great infill project. It'll be good for this particular neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to say, I feel like I'm in an alternative universe because me and Mike Keck have never talked about anything but public safety in this council chambers. So it's a bit strange. But I'm in support of the project.
All right. All right, if there's no other comments from council, then is there anyone in the public? Did you want to say anything else, Mike?
No, sir. Thank you again. And again, we wanted to thank Paul Tice and his staff for their time and effort to help us get through this.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else in the public want to address this particular request?
Can you just formally open and then close the public hearing?
I think I did formally open it, but I didn't. Well, I'm formally open the public hearing then. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on this subject? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. And consider an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.408. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from single-family residential to multifamily residential on approximately 2.49 acres of property generally located east of Schultz Street and north of McMurray Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.408 as presented.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to L3, public hearing and considering ordinance number 1397.17.53.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, with the passage of Prop 207, which legalized the sale of adult-use marijuana products, that created a potential conflict within our zoning code, which only addressed the sale of medical marijuana product and medical marijuana-related land uses. Council did pass an ordinance prior to the effective date of Prop 207 as a interim basis addressing those rules and regulations while we had a chance to amend our zoning code to do the same. And so what's before you this evening are the specific zoning code text amendments that bring us into compliance, if you will, with Prop 207. Uh-oh, Joe didn't give me good...
He set you up.
He did set me up. He told me it was the marijuana, I'll say. Thank you. So the amendments really, they're pretty simple. I'll go through them pretty quickly for you. We amended the definitions. We amended slightly the development standards, and we modified the permitted use chart. In terms of definitions, the primary changes were to remove most references to medical marijuana and replace it with a generic reference to marijuana uses that include both medical and adult-use marijuana-related uses. We added a definition for marijuana testing facilities because that's a new use that our code did not currently address, but was included in the Prop 207 regulations, our statutes. And we modified the definition of dispensary to include those that both hold a dual license to dispense both medical and adult-use product, as well as those that dispense only medical product. As far as where dispensaries can be located in the city, we really didn't change the locations at all. Dispensaries are allowed within our dispensary overlay zone that mounted on the south by Florence and on the east by Henness, and the north by McMurray, and on the west by Arizona. As you may be aware, our one dispensary in the city is located in that area. It's shown on the screen on Saban Drive. We did analyze under our current, under both our proposed rules, as to whether or not another dispensary could be located within that area and meet all of the separation requirements. You can see that the yellow, two yellow lots potentially could meet the separation requirements. So theoretically, a dispensary could be located on one of those two lots and meet all the separation requirements of our code. The one thing that this, our current code does not do, nor does the proposed code, is regulate the number of dispensaries. This code regulates the location, the zone districts, the separation requirements, but the number of dispensaries are a function of Department of Health Services regulations and not our local regulations. Marijuana uses are also allowed, in addition to dispensaries being allowed in our overlay zone, other marijuana uses are allowed in our industrial districts. So those other marijuana uses would be cultivation facilities, if you will, grow facilities, infusion facilities, testing facilities. And they're allowed in the I-1 and I-2 zone districts. What you see on the graphic in front of you, the green areas, are those areas that are zoned I-1 and I-2 and meet all the separation requirements. That, this graphic needs to be updated a little bit because we've rezoned some properties residential, like Florence and Nash property, for example, that would take away some of this green area. But essentially, this shows you that there's a significant area within our I-1 and I-2 districts in which marijuana uses can be allowed, potentially can be allowed, or can be cited. For development standards, we really didn't modify the development standards except for this one. We have a current provision on the delivery of medical products, of marijuana products, specifically medical marijuana products. So this one, this provision continues the prohibition on delivery of marijuana or marijuana products in the city. However, there's an exception that allows a nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary to deliver in compliance with the Arizona Department of Health Services rules and requirements. And the reason why that's been put in there is that, my understanding, is that the new state law requires the Arizona Department of Health Services to consider those kinds of rules by a specific date a couple of years in the future. So this just sets us up for if and when ADHS adopts those rules, that we'll be in compliance with those. As far as distance requirements, there really was not much modification. There were the two that modifications we did make are in bold here. The first is that there's a separation. These are the separation requirements, if you will. The first is 500 feet from any other marijuana use that's in place today. The change is that, except a medical, a marijuana dispensary, excuse me, may be co-located in the same building as a marijuana cultivation facility. So if someone creates a grow facility in one of our industrial zones, they could have a dispensary located in that same building. There's no separation required. Of course, both of those are still subject to licensing from ADHS. The other thing is from separation, we currently have a separation from any residentially-used or platted property. We now have introduced the residentially-zoned property as a separation. So if you have vacant residential land, zone residential, like that R3 site you just approved, even though it doesn't have an apartment complex on it, there would be a separation from the R3 site or the vacant residential site, as well as any sites that are used or planted for residential purposes. I think that was a bit of an oversight from the first code, right, but we put it in this time. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this, and no one really testified that I can recall. I don't think there was no opposition expressed, and they did vote to forward a recommendation of approval of the proposed zoning code text amendment to city council. And that concludes my presentation.
Anyone have any questions on the council?
Mayor?
Bob?
Bob?
What is a testing facility? Is that a lab that doesn't sell it, or...
Mayor McFarland, Mayor Protem Huddleston, it is a testing facility, does not sell, but under the new ADHS rules, before any product can be sold, it must be tested to make sure it doesn't have certain contaminants in it, pesticides, and that it's essentially safe to use from a health reason. And so ADHS actually has to certify the testing facilities. There are very few in the state today, but it is a requirement under the new ADHS rules.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none from the council, then I will open the floor for public hearing, since this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the council on item number L3? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and call for ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1397.17.53. An ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending Title 17 of the city of Casa Grande municipal code by adding and amending definitions, regulations, and requirements for the dispensing, cultivating, infusing, testing, and use of marijuana, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1397.17.53.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I please get a roll call vote, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
And Mary, I didn't put this one last, so blame somebody for amending the agenda. Okay, so the next item on here is our L4.
I'm going to sanitize for you.
And it's a public hearing and consider resolution number 5270.1. And I think it has to do with CDBG funding.
It does. So we are, the staff is recommending to amend the Community Development Block Grant 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan and the 2020 Annual Action Plan for the CV3 funding, the COVID funding. In December, you approved the utility payment kiosk at $150,000 to, we were planning to put kiosks in different locations throughout the city. After additional meetings with the IT staff and finance team, it was determined that the payment kiosk option is a good idea, but not at this exact moment. The finance team is looking into leveraging business relationships with existing local businesses that already offer very similar services, such as Walmart, Amazon Pay, and Alexa Pay. These do not charge the city any fees, but there are additional options available to some of our patrons. The Dorothy Powell Senior Center is making preparations to reopen at some point in the new fiscal year in transition from the home-delivered meals to congregant meals and then senior activities. This return-to-service plan would resume onsite senior services activities in a phased approach. In preparation for the seniors returning to in-person services, the Dorothy Powell Senior Staff and Facility Maintenance toured the facility to address any potential risks to senior patrons related to the prevention and spread of coronavirus. So that building has not been renovated since, I think it was 2010. So we were looking at items such as removing the carpet and replacing it with a slip-resistant, easy-to-clean, and sanitized flooring, replace the vinyl kitchen flooring with a slip-resistant, easy-to-clean, sanitized flooring at that point, and also bathroom renovations that would include automatic flushing, sensor motion faucets, and air dryers, and also update the service lines to keep social distance and safety measures in place. We did a five-day review period, and we received no comments from the public as far as the change in activities. Any questions?
I think this is excellent. I mean, I think the Dorothy Powell Center can use the upgrade and update, and it's good for our seniors. The only thing I want to know is when can we open it back up? I know, soon. Just, I'm just kidding. Does anybody else on the council have any questions or comments?
Mayor, just a comment. Dorothy Powell's Senior Center, it's good for me. Just, I'm thrilled to see that added to...
Yeah, it's good.
To the project, and I'm personally glad we backed away from the kiosks. I'm glad there's another opportunity there, but I like seeing that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mary. Seeing none, then this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to the public. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address item L4? Okay, seeing no one, then we'll close the public hearing, and we will call for a, what did we call this?
Resolution.
A resolution, please.
Resolution number 5270.1. A resolution of the mayor and council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the amended Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus 8 Relief and Economic Security Allocation to the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and the Project Year 2020 Annual Action Plan for the Use of Additional CDBG Funds.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for passage of resolution number 5270.1 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
All right. One thing, well, two things left on the agenda. And since I think I started with you last time, Jeff, let's start over here to my right. And Bob, you want to go first?
Sure.
We'll do the reports, sorry.
I attended the CAG meeting last Wednesday, and it was very informative. It touched on a couple of items that we're particularly concerned about. And one is the legislative update that gave us a briefing on state and federal... They gave us a briefing on state and federal revenues seem to be very healthy right now, along with a national and statewide focus on infrastructure projects. So I already mentioned to the mayor that that bodes very well for our priority of getting I-10 straightened out. So very, very hopeful that that's all good groundwork and that that momentum is, is rolling forward. Also, I wanted to compliment Public Works for getting Trekkle Road done. I'm particularly pleased with the striping and the lane reduction on Trekkle south of Florence Boulevard. I've driven that several times since it's been restriped, and it really does have a feeling of a neighborhood as opposed to a Speedway down through there. I haven't heard from any of the residents, but I'm sure they are quite pleased. So thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Mr. Powell.
Did everybody read the paper today? There's pictures of somebody we know. And I've got a picture here in the back. And I told them, I don't know who that guy is in the background, but I know this is our mayor. We got really, really good publicity on this. They went through all the things that are going on and how Pinellas County can become a hub for this type of thing. And so he did say that if you wanted it autographed, he would sign $5 extra. That's, that's, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of things. One, it's Small Business Week and Small Business Month. The main street's promoting that as well as the chamber. So get out and always support local businesses, small businesses, and they are all over town. So just remember to help them out because they're the ones that sponsor most stuff and, and help out most people in town. Downtown on May 14th is the Night Out Car Show at the Neon Sign Park with a DJ from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and some of the restaurants and businesses will be open down there. And the Youth Commission, the applications are online for anyone that would like to join. That will be, will be having the interviews next month in May, or, in June, I'm sorry. It's just May. And then also, we got our scholarship entries in, and they're being judged by volunteer judges this week. So we'll have some big announcements forthcoming. So that's about all I have. And just shows that we're a leader in a lot of the fields around here in Pinellas County by the right up in the republic, among other things. So thank you for that, Mayor.
Thanks, Matt. Lisa?
Just a reminder, I'm happy to see that we're going to continue with the internship program with the city. So it's on the website, so for anyone that has high school or college kids, we will be. And when is the deadline for that? The 14th?
I think it's the 12th.
May 14th is the deadline to submit an application. So I'm happy to hear we're doing that. Of course, this is the time of year where there's lots of graduations that we're supposed to be. So I just wanted to congratulate all of our college graduates. You know, fortunately, there's still a lot of virtual graduations going on. But, you know, of course, I'm so proud to see some of the students, and they're so positive, and all over social media, all the people graduating. So congratulations to all of them. And in the proms, I was happy to see that the schools are trying to do something a little more normal for, for our high school kids. So happy to see that. And just a reminder for any of the council or in the public, the Faith Alliance is doing the mayor's appreciation luncheon on May 18th at 11:00 a.m. So if any of you guys would like to come, if you can just shoot me an email, it's at 11 o'clock at the Recreation Center. So it's just going to have our churches throughout the community. The mayor's going to just kind of thank them for their service with the prayers and how they can help moving forward on some of the issues that we face in our community. So would love to have anyone join us. You can register on United Way website.
It's May 12th on the.
On May 18th.
May 12th on the application, sorry.
Oh, May 12th for the.
For the interns.
Internship.
Five to six interns.
Perfect.
Donna?
A couple of things I just wanted to congratulate Chief Keane. He finished a four-year program at the National Fire Academy, actually, in five years. But that was not because of him, it was because of COVID. And then also Officer Jesus Lara, I believe, was the VFW Officer of the Year. Thought that was encouraging for our law enforcement. Also, Matt mentioned the Youth Commission. I just wanted to give a shout out to Evan Chaparro, who is, has been a member of the Youth Commission. And he's a valedictorian at Vista Grande, but he also is a Flynn Scholarship winner, which is a really big honor. And the community center reopens June 1st. And so I'm excited to get those things started back up again, and we're slowly seeing things open. So make sure that if you have a membership, that you know it opens back up June 1st. Thank you.
The second Youth Commission member to get the Flynn Scholarship.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Evan is also a former Valago student, so we're real proud of him. On April 23rd, the Cesar Chavez Committee did our annual scholarships. Alejandro Chavez came down, and we had the event in the Neon Sign Park. It was very nice. Great place to have an event. So I would encourage community members to venture out in the evening out there. Also tonight was Vista Grande's Senior Night for Softball. Rudy Valenzuela, the original coach for the team, has announced his retirement at the end of the year. He's done a phenomenal job building that program. That team's got a real shot at winning the state championship this year. They've only lost one game. Saturday night was a great night for Casa Grande. Both the Ramoses won on pay-per-view. Jesus is now 16-0. And our mayor came out to Valago on April 22nd. He thought he was out there to recognize his granddaughter for making the B-wall, but we also recognized the mayor for all his hard work and put his name up on the wall. And I shared with the people out there how proud we are to have Craig as our mayor. Obviously, that does not, the article with you and Governor Ducey probably outshines this picture, Mayor, but.
This one's more, this one's more important.
It's your beautiful family, and congratulations to your granddaughter as well as you for being on our B-wall.
Thank you, Jeff. You guys are making me blush up here. Just a few things. I know everybody received a ballot on Proposition, what is it, Proposition 4? 456, thank you. Proposition 456. And I know we've received some communication, and people don't know what it is. So please go online, if you want to learn more about it, go over to the city's website, casagrandeaz.gov, and look up General Plan. It's, it's your General Plan 2030 update. And it's a simple yes-no vote, but you have to have it turned in and received by the 18th of May. So you've got about another week to get it in. I voted, mine's in. And I know pretty much everybody here has voted. So let's, let's, let's get it in there. And again, if you have any questions, you know, call City Hall if you have questions. We'll, we'll try and answer them. It's, it's out there. It dictates your, your land use or our land use here in the city of Casa Grande. So please get out there and make a difference. Also, this week, on May 6th at 6:00 p.m., we're going to have another virtual panel discussion. It's another mayor's town hall. And this particular one is going to be on the United States Army. And it's, it's really kind of in conjunction with this month in recognizing and supporting our armed services for Memorial Day, which is the 31st of this month. But join me, and we'll have some guests there from the United States Army personnel, the local, the local manager, not manager, he's a, what is he, he's a captain? I'm not sure what his rank is now, now that, now they've just fumbled across it. But he'll be there along with some of his new recruits. We're going to talk about, you know, you know, United States Army recruits and have them share some insights into the life of service and duty to our country. So tell a friend. It's, it'll be on virtual on Facebook. You can also find the connection through our city website. It'll be live, and you can watch it on YouTube or Facebook. If you don't have Facebook, you can get it on YouTube. So look forward to seeing everybody there on Thursday. That's, I think 6 is Thursday, yeah, Thursday at 6 o'clock. And then I also wanted to remind folks that, and then I know that Donna has already done this, but the Community Rec Center is going to be opening June 1st. But I want to throw a carrot out there. If we can get our infection rates down, and today we went under 100 per 100,000, so that was a milestone. We haven't been there in, probably since, oh, July last year. And so that, that was huge. No deaths. We haven't had any deaths in like three, four days. The state's had like one. So death rates are way down, I will, I will tell you that. So that's the good news. But our, our vaccinations are slowing way down. We're at about, we're not about, we are at 33% of our population, 85122, has been vaccinated. 33%, almost on the nose. That's higher than the county, and it's a little higher, well, it's about the same as the state. So about a third of our population. Another 13% or 14% has had COVID here in 85122. So we're at about 46, when I'm calling 46% herd immunity, meaning somebody has some level of immunity. And we need to get that, that number, the number of infections per 100,000, we need to get that down well below 50. And then we also need to get our infection rates down. We're sitting at about 11% right now. So I'd like to see that down below 10. So if we can get, get it there, and June 1st rolls around, we're going to re, we're going to look at the CDC guidelines because they made some changes. And we may begin to rescind the mask requirements. That would be in the rec center as well. And I don't know if we can make any concessions for those who've had vac, who've been vaccinated and are working out. We're still working on that, but, you know, keep an eye on our website for more information on that. We will, we will be updating it here in the next week or so. All right, so that's, that's, I just wanted to kind of get people interested in maybe getting vaccinated. Still available at the Dorothy Powell Center, so please get over there and get your vaccines. Yeah, the governor passed, this morning, he actually issued another executive order. So I just wanted to give everyone an update that now reinstates the individuals, that individuals receiving benefits for unemployment now must actively be looking, actively looking for a job. He rescinded that back in, what, April of last year, May of last year? May, May 23rd last year. So if you're getting unemployment, you need to start actively looking for a job. And I know this is a big, a big issue with some of our employers because they can't get people to come back to work. So we need, we need for this to happen. We need people to get back to work. So. Also, just a shout out, a shout out that we're having the volunteers, the AARP Experience Corps and achieve Pinellas group. Jerry Stably, who's leading the group on our third grade reading program. We're having a graduation for those, those learners, the teachers. That's going to be May 7th from 1:30 to 3:00. If you're interested, we'll make sure we get something posted on our website. And it's going to have some guest speakers, including me and Dr. Joetta Gonzalez. So it should be interesting. It's, we'll talk about summer school next year's school, school program as well. So look forward to that. And, and lastly, a big shout out, I want to, and I'm asking Larry to send these guys a note and maybe put this, put a little kudos in their file. But I did receive a letter from the Casa Grande Lakes Community Association, and they wanted me to publicly thank a couple of our Public Works employees. They're, they are Mr. Ricardo Carranza and Mr. Pedro Reyna and Clyde Wilkinson. So to the three of you guys, great job. They couldn't, it was a big, long thank you note, basically, to the three of them and how they handled some repairs that needed to be done in, in the Lakes community. And, and the Lakes community was, was giving them out a big, big thank you. So I want to make sure we publicly thank them. And Larry, if you would, please follow up with them as well and let them know that, that the council appreciates their efforts because we don't get a lot of letters like this. So I think that's all I've got, probably enough. Anybody else have anything you want to say? I appreciate the, the shout outs tonight, too. So thank you, Jeff, thank you. All right, if that's all we've got, then meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Kevin, if you could thank those guys, too, for me. I know you got copied on the letter, so.